We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mike Silver.
Here.
Max Heimer.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yep.
Redmond.
Any public comments on the agenda items? Okay, committee reports, please.
I don't think they feel well. I'm hoping to report right now.
Order, Superior Committee. Station three, the pump has been removed and set off to recondition. A new isolation valve is here and a new check valve has been ordered. They should both be ready for everything to go back in when the pump gets back from being reconditioned. So we're gonna try to rebuild the pump then?
Yeah. Just in received response from CN about the forced main permit. We need to make some slight revisions to the plan and send in some soil samples to complete the permit process before we get that forced main starting to be finished. We think we might need to sit down with Lee Beckman to discuss possible options or scenarios pertaining to the infrastructure replacement during square renovations. If they're gonna be tearing up a bunch of concrete and doing all kinds of stuff, maybe we need to look at seeing how our water mains and stuff are out there. Valve exercising, Danbury Place, Hawthorne Court, Jefferson Park, Cookin Park, and a couple other valves on the east side have been exercised. We put five more water meters in, but we are still behind according to the schedule on those. And that was about it.
Matt, you have anything to add, or any other committee members have anything to add?
The only thing I'd like to add is when we were talking, he mentioned Station Three. The plan that I'm proposing, and we discussed earlier in our committee meeting, was to rebuild the pump that we were having problems with, as well as, once that's replaced, rebuild the one that we're running on now. That, in my opinion, buys us time to go through the process of engineering, designing, and working our funds to replace that station. That's the reason we're going on that.
Okay.
After the meeting and the financial statements for July, it looks like the sewer fund made forty thousand dollars for miscellaneous income. So that was like a problem with our financial statements. I'm not sure if the finance committee's gonna look into that. We're fixing to be missing forty thousand.
Sewer pump shed? That was from the sewer pump shed, right?
But what that is, well, let me sit and figure.
Thirty days and some change.
Yep, that'd be it.
Oh, that was the insurance. There we go. Everything's secure.
I found it.
Take back everything I said about Abbott's.
Well, we just forgot that, so we don't know about it.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Water and Sewer? Streets and alleys? Anything to report there?
Yes. I did contact several rental places to look at renting a oil and chipper for seal cracking and whatnot. And finally got in touch with Chestnut, Mark Carlin.
Yeah.
He's actually got, bought a newer one for Chestnut and does rent it out. And we talked about having him come over here and do a demonstration with us, and he's willing to work with us as far as renting it out to us. It'll be the truck and trailer and everything that we need with that. It actually holds about two hundred gallons of oil, and it'll do about ten ton of rock at two hundred gallons. That's a half chip rock, and that's about two dollars a gallon, plus it would be whatever the running fee per hour of the machine. So that's what we're looking at, and hopefully with the rain this week, I was hoping it would've been like Friday of last week, but the rain has set them back. It's actually at Broadwell right now.
Okay.
Because they rented it. So hopefully, whenever he gives me a call, he's gonna come over and I get hold of everybody and we can take a look at it, see how it works, and see if there's something that's gonna work for us.
Good. Is that the townships or the villages?
I believe it's the township.
Right. Because I don't think our township has one.
And then I talked.
County does ours.
And I talked to him about, a little bit more about how he was trying to take care of his streets and alleys and stuff like that. Got to talk to him about some rentals of some equipment as far as planners and stuff like that for leveling everything out. Hopefully, we got a good lead on that to where.
Good.
Try to get some stuff flattened out a little bit and then pull and chip some roads. I don't know if it'll happen this year, but definitely got a good avenue to go down.
Yes, that's good to know. We cannot, you know, for, if it's not gonna happen this year, and we wanna plan on doing it next year, we can, whenever we do our motor fuel tax resolution, we can, if we know we're gonna use that stuff, we can skew those numbers to do a lot of it.
Right.
You know? Because I'm not sure how much is dedicated to that. I think that'll be a lot, maybe ten thousand. For seal cracking and oil and shipping.
And there's all kinds of different oils and stuff like that, so I'm just kinda getting into it right now. He was talking foreign to me.
Right.
So I'll have to get into it more with him with that, and we can sit down and talk to him about what works best, at what time of year, and whatnot.
Okay. That's good news. Good work.
Anything else? I think that's about it.
Matt, you have anything to add?
No.
Any other questions for Streets and Alleys?
Should I do that one thing, Dad? I apologize. Darren made reference of repair. We was finished up today on Washington Street. Well, the next few days, we're gonna be making conceded effort to do our best to get Washington Street as best as we can for the Soapbox Derby and the Fall Festival. We're gonna, like I said, we're gonna do the best we can to make it as smooth as we possibly can. We don't have the magic wand by all means, but it'll be as good as it can be.
Right.
So I meant to say it earlier. That's the only thing.
Good.
We met recently, and basically, we were meeting with Tricia to go over, discuss Abbott's response, and we feel that their response is that they're willing to work with us and try to get us our financial information a lot quicker. The bulk of the meeting was discussing the bank balances for all the funds, and that we're still unsure what the numbers is. Tricia had them prepare a reconciliation for the last year for actual transfers between the bank accounts, and unfortunately, they did not match or tie out. So that's still a work in progress, and she is gonna be continuing to work on that. And hopefully, we're gonna have that done by the time the auditors come in October, so that at least with this current fiscal year, we'll be on a lot closer with the balances and have the do-tos and do-froms to a lot more reasonable amounts. And also, I don't know if you wanted to talk about this, Tricia, a meeting with Sally Turner that she reviewed our levy stuff and found that we are entitled to an additional thirty-two hundred dollars over all the different funds, and that we got those documents being turned in a lot more timely and a hell of a lot more accurate, so.
Good. So she paid for herself in the first meeting? So she paid for herself? So, that's it? Did you do, were you getting anything to say, something, or?
No, I was just saying, I have it. I meant to make a copy of the levy if we wanna pass it. We don't have to do it today because we have till December. Normally, I procrastinate because it's something I never really knew how to do.
Right.
So.
I would say get a copy in everybody's box for review.
That's what I said. We don't have to do it today because we have time, but I do have it, and I apologize for.
We give everyone a chance to review, and then maybe sometime in the next month or so we get that passed.
Yeah.
I mean, if Sally's looked over it, I'm sure it's.
No hurry. It's just formality on that one, yeah.
Anything else for Finance? Any public comments on the non-agenda items? Approval consent agenda, approval of bills?
Abbott and Associates fifteen hundred, Adam's sole inspection, five hundred and twenty-five, economic development resources, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, ten cents, IAB, two thousand one hundred, twelve dollars, twelve cents, Don Maxheimer, two thousand two hundred and ninety-five.
Any questions on the bills? The business district appropriation would be, did everybody get a copy of that grant application from Sewer Men in their box? I should've had, I should've. I printed those off on Friday, I think. So she applied for that exact same grant last year. Came for the Economic Development Board, and they didn't really say yea or nay on it. They thought that since it was a street concern, that it would best just come straight to the city council. There was mixed emotion on it last year as far as giving, it didn't get approved last year. It was pretty, in my opinion, unanimous, if I would say so, wouldn't you say, Andrew, as far as not thinking that that was a problem area that needed attention from our funds? But regardless, she has applied again. So, any questions on that grant? It's, it says that's the north side of the post office, that whole block from there to the alley. I think the roads were concrete.
I'm of the same opinion that where we were at last year, or where the council was
Any other comments? I'm guessing by the silence that not too many of the elderly men are ready to make a motion to approve this grant. Am I under that, am I under that correct understanding?
Yeah.
All right. I can reply to her that it has, that it has been denied. Two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty appropriations.
They just need to be passed. I passed them out two meetings ago. Hasn't been any changes.
And it ties to the budget that we had earlier?
Yeah, mutual, similar to last year. I mean, all the numbers are efficient enough. If there's some, a big project comes up, unless it's, you know, a million dollars, If there's an allowance for, you know, if a bigger project does come up that wasn't even budgeted for, we can still spend up to that amount.
And the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty levy, should that be removed from the consent agenda?
Yes. We can do that next month.
Do you want, do you wanna go ahead and put that on the agenda for the next month, or?
That's fine.
I'm sure everybody's ready to do it, especially since we, you know, hired someone to look over for us, so. Okay, so the approval of the consent agenda will include the approval of the bills and the appropriations. I'll entertain a motion for that approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including those two items.
Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on the miscellaneous, the video gaming, that was discussed, that was on the agenda at the last meeting. I was contacted by, her name's Nicole Nielsen, about, first she contacted Kelly. She didn't see anything in our ordinances about having a max number of machines in any set establishment. She asked if it was okay if the Illinois Gaming Act now provides, you can have six machines in an establishment. She asked if we were, you know, if we were okay with that, or if we were gonna make any changes to our code. So there wasn't, not everybody was here last time, so before I said, before I was gonna tell her yea or nay that six machines would be okay, I was gonna let anybody know about it. I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to take any action. If we're okay with six, then we just do nothing, and I'll let her know, because our code still contains that, that language in there, so. Does anybody have a jolting concern about having six machines?
I do not.
Okay. I will let her know then. The Logan County GIS contribution, I was contacted by Will DiAndrea. So last year, we didn't do a contribution, which it seems like that's what we've been doing a lot of lately, is not giving contributions away, which is fine. It's totally you guys' choice. Two years ago, and every time before that, it was twenty-two hundred dollars. I'm not sure where that number came from. I talked to Scott Schaafnackr about it, and he said, you guys can contribute, or you don't have to. It's entirely up to us. I'm not su, I'm still trying to grasp why so many of these departments that are ran by the county ask for contributions. Maybe it's just something that every county does, you know, to be more efficient, so that's up for discussion. That was a request made by Will.
I see the benefit in what his office does, and I would hate for, to lose that. In a few years, if nobody contributes, so I'm okay with the contribution. He does, he seems to be helpful whether we contribute or not, but.
Right.
I don't wanna be the cheapskate, Tim.
What other communities have, amounts have contributed?
That I could answer.
Do we know? So we don't know what, what kind of dollar amount is a quote-unquote reasonable.
Right.
Contribution?
That's something, we can do more research about that if you want, Tim, but we're in no hurry. We do not benefit.
I'm for contributing, but at the same time, I was kinda curious on what.
I'm not sure how he came up with that number. I'll ask him.
Okay.
Yes. Well, it's GIS, and I think it's, I mean, Logan County Planning Commission, too, I think. I mean, he has a lot to do with, he chairs the Planning Commission Board. I think that's just his office in general.
What was the contribution amount?
Twenty-two hundred.
What did it contribute, I mean, is it just for, what did we go for?
Um, I mean, the Logan County GIS and Planning Commission, it's kinda hard to explain. I mean, that, they just created that fifteen years ago. It's not like, it hasn't been part of the county for very long. Will's worked with us on our zoning map. Like I said, he, he worked with us a little bit last year on the GIS map. He's got our awards layered. There's a layer to look at our awards. Any type of zoning change that happens in the unincorporated county goes through his office to go to the, to the Planning Commission. You know, probably you could ask, I would ask the county board, really, to find, if you wanted to find out more, ask them himself. That's the things that I've worked with him, with. I'm sure there's more.
Things that I, I worked with him on are getting our KIF district map and our business district map put on there. He's identified a few places within our city limits that weren't zoned within our city limits. I don't know if he ever actually got those fixed or not, but he's like.
I don't think, yeah.
Aren't paying taxes to the city.
I think, I think what we figured out is because that was, because our map was wrong. And he was just using the generic zoning map, I think, that Rockford Publishers did for us. Because, well, at least the one property of Berry Leaches. I, I went to the county clerk, and they could find no such annexation documents, so. But that's a good point, Andrew. I will follow up on that to make sure that Will has everything he needs on that. Any other discussion about the Logan County GIS contribution? I will follow up with Will and get a little bit more info for you guys. Okay, recreational marijuana ordinance. This was brought up a couple meetings ago. I think Andrew was the one that was asked about it. Did everybody get, I have this paper copy, if nobody got that email.
How many copies for everybody?
Did you?
The IML fact sheet on that.
Yes.
And also, last week, the state legislative sponsors put out a municipal toolkit, and I printed out that document for everybody, too, kinda summarizing all the different options for municipalities of how they can kinda regulate the where and how cannabis can be used in their communities. And if you would like the actual PDF that has the links to the statutory language in it, I'll be glad to provide that, too, but I just got this today, so kind of a last-minute
Tony, do you have any thoughts on the matter?
I think it's probably a good idea to make some type of ordinance, something so we can go by.
Right.
Any specific restrictions that you think would be appropriate?
I think the new state law already says can't be in public, right? Can't be in a vehicle, which is gonna eliminate, you can only be like in your home or in somewhere that allows it. So it's fairly restrictible already. I think I read Taylorville passed a three percent tax, because you only have so much time to pass that. In case they get a distributor, they already have that tax in place, where if they wouldn't have passed it, I don't know. I just saw a bar of ours.
Yes, I got that email from you. WAND had a piece about it.
Yeah.
I thought that he said it had to be, that any tax stuff had to be done by September twentieth. I thought that's what the news said on that link that sent me. Does that sound right, Tim?
September twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's a second.
Okay. Okay, so we do have time for that. And there's, you know, me and Tim were talking about this the other day. There's not a ton of urgency when it comes to this, but obviously, we wanna be prepared for, you know, to have what restrictions we feel we need as a town and as a city and as a joint, as a joint council to get those in place before January one.
There's seventy-five dispensary licenses that'll be coming up for applications this fall. That's what they call the first wave, and I think it's somewhere in these documents. And then there's a second wave that starts a year from now for another seventy-five, so the chances of a dispensary wanting to locate here are fairly low in the midterm until the larger communities and larger markets fill up, so. But at the same time, it's still important to review all this and see if there's anything that we wanna add to our zoning language and public consumption and all those type things, so we have it all in place when the time comes, so.
Yeah, so I just, I'm gonna put that in everybody's ear here periodically, you know, just so we're prepared. You guys, you know, you think of a restriction, you think would be good, you know, we don't want it next to a church or next to a school, stuff like that, just jot it down.
Right.
We'll get a joint, you know, get everybody's opinion about it, and then we'll write up an ordinance for it, so.
The municipal league's got a further, this is like a twenty-five page document, it has sample ordinances and all that stuff for consideration, so if you really wanna investigate it further, that's a pretty good resource to start to look into it.
Will that, will you leave that here at City Hall?
Sure.
So anyone that wants to get.
It's on their website. You just look for their cannabis resources, so.
Any other discussion about that? Commercial district restrictions. I was, throughout the economic development meetings, Bill Thomas has talked to us, and I don't think, I haven't found one about if we're going to, you know, if the town square is gonna be a business-only district, to somehow write up some type of ordinance that does not allow first-floor apartments. This is more of just a preliminary discussion about it. I think it's a good idea. There, there is one apartment on the square that's on the first floor, but it's the only floor. This is, this is Atlantis. He sent this to me. This is kind of the language they used to prohibit that, to prohibit that, so what's everybody's thoughts on that? Obviously, we could take some time to read over this and discuss it further at a later date. But, you know, I, with the buildings that are for sale on the square, we're lucky that people that have purchased them in the past has made a business on the storefront. I think it is a good idea, because once, you know, once a building on the town's, on the square sells and if someone cites apartment downstairs, we're, there's nothing we can do about it, so. All right, well, I can follow up with Bill a little bit, get a little bit more information, and maybe type something in Atlantis and try to have that ready here in the next month or so for, for approval to add to our code.
Is it zoned commercial now?
What's that?
Is it zoned commercial now?
Yes. Well, it's like, it's zoned business, but you can still live on the second floor. I don't know exactly how that works. That's a good question. Do you know anything about that, Tim? Why, why they're, why they're allowed apartments upstairs on the square even though it's zoned business? Or is it more?
Off the top of my head, I think it's allowable, but, you know, unless we restrict it, obviously.
Right, right.
So I, I don't have a good answer off the top of my head for that, so.
I mean, all you have to do is zone the first floor commercial, you know?
Yes.
Business or whatever.
You know, because the way this is written, it appears that excluding mobile homes and single, dual, multi-plat, am I reading that correctly?
I think it's more, yeah, it's.
Because I was trying to find the specific language that it says that you can't have it on the first floor, or do they just restrict any residential in their commercial district?
I think what it is, is they say what can be there, and in that list of what can be there, it's not an apartment.
Okay.
You know, dental offices, any professional offices, food and drug, food, drug, and beverage grocery stores, major retail outlets, service and recreation, specialty shops. I think they made a, which, we wouldn't have to go that route, you know, we could just say, well, I mean, we could go that route or not. That'd probably be a better question for Jordan.
I guess it's that last, the verbiage in the last part of that paragraph. So they're saying they need a permit to have on the second, to have a single-family residence on the second floor of the building. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
And that the permit. We may or may not have a, require that, I'm assuming.
All right, so, I think, I can work on that, that's fine. Get ahold of Bill again, and then it says in that first paragraph with section ten, four, or five of this, of this title, I'm gonna have to go to Atlantis. I'm gonna have to look at ten, four, or five to see what they're talking about there. Okay. Something that was brought to my attention, I'm passing on, so I think we're in agreement that restricting apartments on the first floor of any of our bill's amendments would be a good idea, so we'll go ahead and pursue that. Any other miscellaneous business? Kinda had a word here, but back to the video gaming, she did, that lady also contacted me about, somebody that contacted her wanting to open up a gaming parlor, I responded to her that there's only three liquor licenses allowed in this town for, that the liquor license is required to have a gaming, to have the machines. I said if she, the best case, and that's what happened the last time somebody wanted to do it, I said if you want to open, you know, have the city council extend that number of licenses to four, the best thing for them to do is to come to a city council meeting and ask us. I think that's the best, best route for them to take, so she passed that information That was something I forgot to talk about there, so. Any other miscellaneous business?
How serious do you think they were on that? Okay.
Probably not very. I mean, it was a pretty short email that said someone contacted me about opening a gaming parlor and what restrictions we have on that, and I told her, you know, we only allow, the liquor license that's required for gamings, for video gaming, we only allow three of them, and they're all taken, so.
So it was more of an inquiry more than anything?
I think so, yes.
I think we should stand our ground on the gaming.
I agree with you.
That we have in town. We don't need, we have three now where they have. We don't need, we have three now where they have the gaming, and I don't think any of them is necessary.
I agree with you. Especially if it's just a parlor, you know, with that, that's all there is there. You know, I guess with the places that are at now, there's, at least you can get a bite to eat or something drank, so. Anything else? Okay, I would like to enter executive session for twenty minutes to discuss personnel. Please, if someone would make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll stick it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would entertain a motion to approve the raises for our employees as discussed.
I will make that motion.
I'll stick it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Before we adjourn?
Yes.
Can we advise Kelly to buy a new tape recorder?
Yes.
Can, uh...
Whatever you think is appropriate.
Did Paula, do they have anything in like Quill or anything like that?
They might, I really don't know, I mean, we can check, so, and it's just a, well, just let me know what it is and I'll do some research on it, or...
Or if you find something, just get, you know, you can get the card from Paula, if you need to go wherever and buy it.
That should be reimbursed and all that stuff, if we could just, I mean, either way, I mean, I...
Either way, if you, yeah.
Or you can look on Quill, if you find something and let me know, then I'll place the order here, yeah, that'll work, and order the card, so.
Okay. There's no other business, I will declare this meeting over.
One other thing, a resident came to me, and she's been before on Spring and German, down there, um... When you under, underpass that ditch down there, she's willing to buy the culvert to fill that in. Uh, it's been brought up before, should she bring something into the count, to the city hall and ask?
Probably, yeah, I mean, I would, yeah, I would contact city hall and make a work order for it, is it Helen Schmidt? I can't remember if we talked about that before.
Yeah, we talked about it before, I think she came to me.
She's talking about from the driveway.
She wants a culvert built?
She wants a culvert, I'm pretty sure, she hasn't talked to me, but I, if I'm picking up her joint statement, she wants a culvert tonight.
Right, a culvert there, it's flat, and she's willing to pay for the culvert.
So we went a little bit down this road before, ditches do have a purpose, whoever just wants a culvert, like, can't just say, you get a culvert.
Yeah, and I don't know what was decided the last time.
So whatever, whatever seems appropriate and makes sense.
None of it depends on the reasoning, and also the water flow in that particular neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, the water flow is a big thing there.
Yeah, have her come in and...
Fill out a paper, okay.
Do a work order from her.
Yes.
Usually, Kelly, they just get a little...
That has to go with this.